Good evening. I'd like to call the order to Concord Township Zoning Commission for Tuesday, April 1st, April 12th, 2025. On the agenda, let's have a call to order. Heather, please.
Mr. Schindler?
Present.
Mr. Eiffelies?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Wirtel?
Here.
Mr. Rappert?
Here. Okay, if you would all join me by standing and pledge the allegiance. Right here.
That was okay.
Which one am I doing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Oh, okay. I did call the order. That was me. Okay, I'm all right. We already did the roll call. Approval of the minutes for March 4th. Everybody have a chance to read them? Except John?
No, I didn't get read. Yeah, I read them online, yep.
And I have them here someplace.
I'm good with them. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve minutes from March the 4th?
Yeah, I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Oppose?
Abstain.
Abstain.
I wasn't here.
Four approved, zero no's, and one abstain. Okay, minutes are approved. Correspondents? Let's go over here. Rich?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman?
Rich? John?
I did, actually. I had somebody call me and brought, asked a question, inquired about if we have any bed and breakfasts actually in Concord that you're aware of? I know we have none zoning. Do we have any active bed and breakfasts in our, in the township that you're aware of?
No.
Uh, they inquired also about potentially, didn't give you any specific location or anything like that. Um, Heather, what they did bring up to me was interesting. Um, and much like, uh, I hate to, you call it a container house, but that's really what it is. You take shipping containers now and turn them into houses.
Mm-hmm.
And I did some research on my own and kind of looked into it more. It's not just like I said, I was, it's not the stickers on the side of the container. It's actually they become, they use the structure.
Yeah.
Some of them are insulated, I come to find out, quite well, because they're sort of watertight, insulated. And obviously, they cut openings in them for windows and doors and things like that. They can stack them, put them side by side, meet square footage requirements and things like that to create these quote unquote, interesting, modern, um, looking homes. And not, they don't get extravagant, they don't get big, much like a small A-frame. Um, so I didn't know if, and they also inquired if we had any bed and breakfasts, active bed and breakfasts in Concord. So I didn't have the answer, so.
What was their question about the container houses?
If we, if Concord has any restrictions on them.
Oh, okay.
That was the question.
Yeah.
And I said, well, if you get a building permit, and which I, you can get a building permit, I don't know. I mean, you can get a, um, a permit to construct this.
Right.
It's, it's a, it's a method for, it's a method that's, that's acceptable, much like a concrete house with me.
Mm-hmm.
You know, your preformed concrete house, which that exists, um, you know, ICE block, things like that, that is, um, you know, it's, it's, it's an alternative way of construction. So their question to me was just, A, you know, do, do we have any active, you know, um, requirements regarding that? And B, is there any bed and breakfast, active bed and breakfast in Concord?
Well, regarding the zoning resolution and the container homes, it's silent on that. So as long as it meets all the minimum square footage requirements, height, parking, you know, all the setbacks and everything, then like you stated, you know, the building code does allow for.
Yes, it is.
Those type of, um, containers to be used for buildings now, so, yeah.
And bed and breakfast, are we aware of any active bed and breakfasts in Concord?
No, no.
Okay. That was it?
Okay. Frank, any correspondence?
Anonymous, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I had one myself. Take care of that. Zoning inspector report. Heather, it's all yours.
And I actually do not have an update this month. I was not able to get my March, um, report done in time for this evening, so.
Question on that, though.
Yeah.
On the trustee meeting, they talked about the auction was held on the old Quail Hollow building?
Oh, yeah, I could probably give a brief update on that, sure.
Did it sell?
Yeah, so, um, the Quail Hollow Hotel, there was an auction, there was a winning bid that met the reserve. It was approximately $2.7 million. The, the sale is not finalized yet. The auctioneer has sent the information, you know, to the judge. Um, and it's our understanding that, um, that it could be finalized this week, potentially. We have spoken to the buyer, the winning bidder, um, the administrator, myself, and the jet administrator and one of the trustees got a meeting with that individual. So they're hoping that the sale does get finalized and they, and they do take possession of it. Um, I guess there's still a small chance that the ownership could try to get it back somehow, but I, I don't know, um, if they will, you know, um, but if it does go through, at least we know who they are. They are local, they're, they're from this area. They do have some plans for it and hopefully, you know, they can do something nice with it.
Good, great.
Do you have any idea, a hint of what they?
What's that?
You have any idea what they're hinting on maybe building?
I don't know, I don't know if that's public really to, to share at this point. I'm not really sure. I'd rather wait and.
Just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
Top golf, that's what I want.
We talked about the zoning and the challenges with it and some of their ideas.
Yeah, they're gonna have to put a lot of money into it.
It was still very, they were still trying to, you know, come up with a, um, a solid plan for it, but.
Okay. Got you. Good. I don't see any public. Do we have anybody on the phone?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. New business? Hearing any? Going once? Going twice? No new business? Okay? Old business? Work session? Heather, we have something in front of us. On small solar regulations. Can you walk us through it, please?
Oh, sure. I did put together a few slides to go over with you. Um, we're gonna put them up over here on the TV.
Douse the lights if you could.
Oh, yeah, I can put them down, but sure. Is that better?
Yeah.
Is that good?
Yeah, it's much better.
Is this the beginning of your April Fool's joke test?
This is coming to Concord.
Right.
No. So, um, I'm no expert in small solar energy facilities. I'm just gonna, you know, preface the, the conversation with that. Um, I pulled some of this information from the Ohio Township Association Winter Conference, and I've looked at several other townships, villages, and cities regulations in Ohio. And tonight, I'm just gonna kind of give you some information about what's happening in Ohio a little bit, and then how, how some of these applications are reviewed at the state level and kind of get into what I was recommending for Concord.
Righty, can you see?
I can see.
You can see?
Yes.
So, the House Bill 501 became effective April of 2023, which gave the townships the authority to regulate small solar development. Their definition is that it means solar panels and associated facilities that are, that have a single interconnection to the electric grid and that are designed and capable of operation of an aggregate capacity of less than 50 megawatts. Projects that have a capacity of 50 megawatts or larger, um, those projects are reviewed by the county. And all of these projects actually are submitted to the Ohio Power Siting Board for any kind of review and approval before any of them would move forward.
Does that mean, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I have more questions about, but does that mean at 50 that the, that the township has no more say, more, no more say in it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll be up to the county commissioners to make a decision.
So that would be the ones like on homes?
No.
No, 50 meg, yeah. Yeah, we'll talk about scale. Yeah, 50 megawatts is large. Extremely large.
Very large.
Yeah. But, so, here's a slide that kind of shows, you know, that in Ohio, these are planned projects that, um, go, that are going to be connected to the grid. You can see that there's been an uptick in the last handful of years. The orange, those are the under 50 megawatts projects, and the blue are the over 50 megawatts projects. So it's still growing in Ohio. And where are they being planned right now? There, there aren't any being planned in Lake County right now, but, um, kind of in our, in our, obviously, and there's a few in, um, Estevila and other areas of Ohio. And I don't know if you can read the chart on the left, but this includes projects that are under the 50 megawatts. So these are projects that are under 50 megawatts, so townships, villages, cities could potentially regulate these projects.
So that color chart at the bottom, what do the colors represent? Is that, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, so the darker red, there's more projects planned there.
Okay.
Yeah, so the.
Not necessarily more megawatts, but more projects?
More projects.
Total, okay.
Correct. So, is small, small, so I think the definite, the terminology is a little misleading. So you hear small sol, small scale solar, but is it really small? Some sources in Michigan and even the representative that spoke at OTA talked about, you know, how, how, how much land area do these projects really take up? So here's an example, um, a good rule of thumb, actually, they're saying for, for each megawatt of direct current, so one megawatt takes up about five to 10 acres of land area. Um, this is 1.2 megawatts, uh, this solar field here that is, um, powering the, um, the, the farm that is there. And it's also creating additional electricity that's going to be more for commercial purposes to be sold, uh, because it's way more than that would, what would be needed to power the, the house and the, the accessory buildings on this property. So this is more of a, the primary purpose of this type of solar field is for commercial purposes, to generate electricity, to sell back to the grid. Even though it's only 1.2 megawatts, it's taking up a large chunk of land. And if we had a 49-megawatt project that came to Concord Township, you know, without any regulations, um, we would not be able to regulate it. With regulations, we could. And 49 megawatts could take up, you know, 500 acres of land, potentially. They're saying nine to 10 acres of land, um, for each megawatt on average for the arrays.
Five to 10 acres of land, right?
Well, there's, this study showed five to 10 when I, the representative from the OSU extension said what they're finding more specifically in Ohio is nine to 10 acres.
Really?
Yeah.
Even with technology advancing, you thought it would have been, as the panels get better, they take up less space.
Yeah, well, and it also takes into consideration like the drainage, the roads that, you know, so it's not necessarily like.
Just the field.
The arrays, yeah, it's just the total land area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a big deal, okay.
So we're saying nine to 10 acres?
For each megawatt. Yeah.
If I remember the calculation, a megawatt's either, it's either one megawatt for every 20 houses or one megawatt for every 200. It's, it's substantial.
Right.
A megawatt, I wanna say, there's a, but it's one of those numbers. It's either, and I know they're far off, but I don't know if I'm adding a zero or, you know, removing a zero, but I know it's, that's what a megawatt, it powers that many houses. So it's substantial.
It could, yes.
Oh, it's substantial, yeah.
Yeah. So I thought, I thought I would just show you some of the things that the Ohio, the Ohio Power Siting Board looks at when an application gets submitted to them. The board, the, the board will not grant the certificate unless it, they determine that the project meets all of these following criteria. I'm not gonna read all of that, but the point of kind of bringing up some of this to you is that the review process for these projects are really expansive. A lot of documentation is submitted, and it takes a lot of expertise to like, look through the information and an, um, an analysis for these larger scale projects that could still be under 50 megawatts. But some of the, uh, so some of the other items that they have to submit with their application is the purpose and scope of their project, you know, a very detailed description of where it's going to be, um, how they're gonna connect it to the grid, what kind of economic impact it's gonna have. Obviously, it has to be in compliance, show how it's gonna be in compliance with any of the, um, air, water, waste, aviation regulations that, um, may, may come into play, health and safety, ecological information, um, and then if it's a wind farm, there's different, criteria that has to be complied with as well. Oh, this is really small, I apologize. And I can send, I can send you guys this PowerPoint, but some of the studies that they're required to submit include, um, you know, the equipment specifications, construction route, road condition study, uh, site characteristics, property values, uh, property value impact studies of the prop, surrounding properties, economic impact, land use analysis, a community engagement and complaint resolution plan, because there are a series of public hearings that go on for these projects as well that allow for public input. They also have to have a decommissioning plan, uh, you know, landscaping plans, geotechnical engineering reports, visual and mitigation plans, wetlands, stream mitigation plan, you know, studies, um, things of that nature. So there are lots of, lots of, uh, lots of information that is submitted for the community to review or the Ohio Public Siting Board. So part of bringing this up is that if we were gonna allow projects of this kind of scope and size in Concord and we wanted to be able to regulate it, these are some of the things that we should be asking for as well, because we know that they also are gonna be submitting these to, um, the Ohio Power Siting Board. But one thing to consider, but for large expansive projects, right? For like even a one-megawatt project, they would likely need.
They would like to have all that.
These are the things that they require, so.
That they require past 50 megawatts?
Right.
And you're saying we should incorporate these into ours, because they're required, I, am I correct?
Potentially, you know, if we wanted to allow small-scale solar as the primary use of the property for commercial distribution, these are the kind of things that we should probably consider putting in the zoning resolution. That's not necessarily what I'm suggesting that we do tonight, but if that was the route that the board wanted to go, I thought this information would be helpful, because these are.
Some, not all, though, because.
Yeah, right.
Because what you're doing then, I mean, I'm sorry, but, but you could be, so, some of those things that they're having them do. On a large scale, they can afford to have, take that risk and do that, but if somebody wants to put a one-megawatt field in, on the property, you might be pricing them right out of the, the game. Do you know what I mean? Are you, are you trying to prohibit that from happening? Or are we doing it with, you know, allowing it, but with reasonable studies being done?
Right.
Right?
Well, we can get into that.
Yeah.
Right.
That's, if I follow what you're saying, you know.
And realistically, we could only do this in R4, right? I mean, there's no plot to land in the rest of the township other than out here in R4. And there aren't that many there.
Right.
Maybe, for example, I was thinking like, if Connie ever sold the airport property, I don't know how many acres she has, but a developer theoretically could build a, a, you know, one-megawatt field, solar farm in the middle, and build houses around it and offer electricity included with your house. That'd be a pretty good selling point, you know, no electric bill. But there are only a few spots that could do that, because even if you look at our, R4 on the zoning map, half of that or more is probably metro parks. They don't show up on the map, but.
Oh, right.
You know, but this whole quadrant over here is the Girdle Road Valley, and, uh, so there's a very few spots.
Right. Five to 10 acres or?
Well, and that, that's.
How do you say, nine to 10 acres?
Yeah, and that's what, to consider, what is the likelihood of us getting a project like that?
Yeah.
Not as likely as some other areas that have larger farms that are.
Oh, yeah.
You know? And that's why you're seeing more growth in, in more, the south, southwest area of Ohio or on their map.
Well, then that, you have the whole, that's the green, that's the greenbelt, right? And it's 75. If you look at, we're down 75, which is farmly, and, and, you know, you have families that don't want farming much, that are, that are using solar fields.
Yeah, they're, they're leasing out large tracts of land to solar companies, yeah, yeah. And those are, those are like the primary use of the property at that point. Those, and the, when people are gonna do that, they're probably gonna do a project right under the 49-megawatts, so they can avoid dealing with the county. Or they'll do something way over the 50 and, and probably do like a 200 or 300-megawatt solar farm. I, I don't know if there are projects where they're doing just one megawatt. I don't know if that makes economic sense for, for folks on a commercial standpoint. But I think you, you, you plan for the, all, all of them, all the, all the different sizes, you know?
So, so if somebody puts in like that one field you showed?
Mm-hmm.
1.2-megawatts, more than what the person can use for his house and his barn or whatever, and then the rest of it goes to the grid, that's gotta get that kind of approval. If it's anything that's going out to the grid, you're gonna have to go to Ohio Powers Siting.
Well, yes, I, it's my understanding that all the projects get approved by the Ohio Pipe Power Siting Board, but under 50-megawatts, local jurisdictions have, can, you know, can regulate them, but over 50-megawatts, the county regulates them.
Okay.
But tying it into the grid, I mean, you can do that with panels on your roof. My friend in Arizona put solar panels in, and he, he covers all his electric costs and then sells back.
That's right. So what, so how, how do we regulate that? How much you use?
We can't regulate that.
Well, no way, no way. If we know that they're, that they're gonna use 1.2-megawatts, they're making, they're putting out a field for 1.2-megawatts on a sunny day, and they're only using 0.5-megawatts, we know the other 0.7 is going out to the grid. And the, the guy who owns the, the solar field is making, is reducing his cost. Is he making money? No.
Well, he might be.
Not for a few years.
Yeah, all right, because he's gotta pay for the panels, but.
He's gotta pay for everything. So, okay, well, let's go on.
Okay. All right. So, what is the next slide? Oh. Mine's going too quick. Okay. This slide, um, getting kind of into some examples here. This shows different types of solar energy systems, accessory type uses versus more of a principal use. On the top, um, section there, you can see, uh, these are different types of roof-mounted accessory-type, um, solar energy systems. These panels are generally flush with the roofs of homes, commercial buildings, accessory structures, and they generally provide power just to that, um, building or structure that it, that it's serving. The accessory to the primary use of the property, such as a residence or a building. Then there, there's also the ground, accessory ground-mounted, and these again typically provide power just to the building, um, or use on the site. And there could be some ancillary that's sold back to the grid, but primarily, the purpose is to provide power to the, to the structure that it's serving. So these primary, there's basically two primary configurations, rooftop, ground-based, but there's also integrated solar panels, um, which could be right into the building materials, like the shingles on your roof or walls of a building, um, which are not probably as common. But I like this image because it kind of showed it, these structures in different settings. More of, um, on the bottom two, you'll see more of a principal use, um, they're calling small. This, this report that I got this information from, their definition of small solar was two megawatts and smaller. Anything over two megawatts, they were considering large. Now, that's different, like the way the state, Ohio, calls solar 50, you know, and smaller. But this, this document was actually from Michigan, but I thought I had a really good image here to show you. The next slide, um, the top left house is actually a house in Concord. They've got the rooftop top-mounted, it's flush, they're, um, single color, low reflective. The other one on the bottom right corner, I found that from a, a solar energy company's website, um, that's a project they did somewhere else in Ohio, just showing a different style of panels that could be mounted on the home. Obviously, the, the, you wanna put them in the best location for the sun to hit them. Next image, I'm sure you've driven by this, of, we, I think we talked about this last month. This is the progressive field off of, in Mayfield Village. I grabbed these images from their GIS website. The, the total property size is 50 acres, and these panels are just serving the, the buildings on the site. I don't have a really good idea of what that land area is. I couldn't get the GIS to calculate an acreage for me for some reason, but you can see that it does take up, you know, knowing that the whole lot's 50 acres, you know, it takes up a, a good portion of their land. They added those panels after the fact, obvious, um, you know, the, the complex was already here, and then they, they got those approved, um, from the village to put those in. And this is an example of an accessory use. So these panels are the accessory to the primary use of the property. Mayfield wrote their regulations after this got approved, because they didn't have any regulations at the time, um, and the way that they, they've allowed these now as a, as a, as an accessory use in a commercial district, um, with the, the primary use of those panels to service the buildings there. Why is it clicking here? Here's a couple of photos again. These are more, um, residential properties, solar panels being used as an accessory use. These are ground-based that are providing service to the homes that are there. Just a couple of different examples, um, little bit, I mean, we, we have developments similar to this kind of style here in Concord. So I thought those were just some images to show. But, uh, so basically zoning considerations, where and what scale of solar might be appropriate for Concord. We talked about, does the comprehensive plan kind of address this? We don't have too much direction, um, regarding this specific land use. One, one thing that you wanna make sure you have with your, any regulations is a purpose statement. Oh, we also need to consider the township's capacity to be able to regulate these, um, again, with some of the larger scale projects, some of the documentation that might need to be submitted and reviewed. It's pretty expansive. You need to consider development standards, site plan review, how would you approve these projects if you were gonna regulate them? And then also maybe take a look at some other community's standards, um, when looking at your own, which I, I did look at a few, and I'm happy to share those documents if anybody wants to see, you know, some other communities' regulations.
Question?
Yes.
The one that's in Concord now, would they come to the zoning board? I mean, would they give the okay to do it, for example?
Since we didn't have any regulations, they didn't need a zoning permit. They just went to the building department and pulled a electrical permit, or I don't know if there's another permit as well with that, or if it's just an electrical permit.
And that was it?
Yeah, and, you know, yes. But with their, with those applications, they do submit, and I know, John, you talked about this at the last meeting, like structural information, um, stamped from a professional engineer stating that the roof is gonna be able to support the, the panels that are gonna be placed on there.
I see.
So they do do their due diligence to make sure that they're not gonna do something that's gonna damage the home or jeopardize, you know.
And then electrical department is, is involved?
The building department.
Building, just the building?
Yeah. So they're gonna be doing the inspections to make sure that they install it correctly.
I was gonna say, electrical.
Yeah, they have to tie it in the meter, yeah.
Yeah.
They submeter it and they tie it in the meter that way.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I just wonder how efficient they are with the amount of sunshine we give you in Ohio.
I don't really know, yeah. I've had a lot of calls from a few solar companies that are installing them for people. Most of them are the rooftop mounted.
Right.
Then maybe one or two that were gonna do ground based and that was just because they couldn't do the rooftop. Because of some site, something specific with the site that just did not work out.
Yeah, I looked at it for my house, I have a friend that does it. Oh, absolutely, I have a friend of mine that does this exact thing in Texas, down in Dallas area. Very large company that he runs that 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 does that. And he did a, they have scans, they they have a computer program, they're gonna take your roof, put it right on top and they can tell how much sun you get. And even though the house is built, you know, east west, the roof is set up perfect for it, it wouldn't it wouldn't pull enough to make it. And quite honestly, I don't have enough roof area either to make it worth. I mean, everything's worthwhile, but it's 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 expense. I mean, this is, it's not a cheap endeavor to put a rooftop solar system in your house. You're looking at about twenty to thirty thousand dollar investment. You know, there's obviously credits that that the federal government gave back and offered. And that was that was the spirit that's what kind of pushed it farther ahead. Is the rebate, you know, but yeah, I didn't have east west, I haven't set up, but it's it wasn't enough roof area to make a difference.
Gotcha.
So, some of the food without that, I've done my book, a little bit.
Like I said, I'm just concerned for the amount of sunshine we get for one thing.
You're right.
How efficiently do they actually work? Or do they work at all?
They don't do it well with snow on top either, even in Arizona.
You're right, yeah.
My buddy says his shuts right down when it gets snow.
I don't think we're having any large solar fields in. I would be shocked to hear it's yet.
Well, and that kind of leads me into, I did draft up for your consideration, just for discussion tonight, some possible regulations. I don't know, I'm not gonna read through it all, but essentially what, there's a purpose statement, definitions. And then we get into general provisions. I I guess I'd like to point your attention to general provisions. What I was suggesting is that we would only, that if we were gonna regulate these solar energy systems, that we would only allow them as an accessory to a principal use or building located on the same lot. And and they shall not be permitted as a primary or principal use of the land. I don't think that these would be an appropriate land use in our residential districts. Since we have, you know, a lot of subdivisions in Concord, I I I would hate for someone to find a ten acre site and just do a solar farm. Or even, you know, within our, we are limited in our commercial and industrial land. I think, you know, we would like to see more economic development projects that would include more business and growth.
So let me ask you a question on that.
Yeah.
So, let's see, I I could have put that on my roof. And I and I wanna make sure I understand it correctly. And when that ties into the system, I could then sell back. Are we prohibiting me from selling back into the grid?
No, I don't, I don't think so, because there's always a chance you're gonna have, you know, you're gonna generate more than you need. As long as the primary use of the panels are for your home, you know.
Rebate, why the federal government did it is to create energy, more energy solar wise, putting it back in the grid, put less demand on the grid, right? Or on on coal plants and everything else that we got rid of. So if that's the case, then by us prohibiting from allowing someone to sell energy back into the grid, right?
Well, it's not necessarily prohibiting that, it's it's saying that the primary purpose of the panels.
Is the house first.
Right.
Well, the prin- the principal use of a small solar system is going back to the grid. Not to your house, to the grid. So we're prohibiting that type of use in Concord township.
As a primary use of that solar?
Of that solar to go back to the grid.
Right, I understand that.
Okay.
But if I have it on my house and.
Primary use is going to you.
Okay.
And not to the grid.
But it can go, but it can go to the grid.
Can go.
Into the grid.
Not as a primary use.
No, but.
But as a residual use, whatever you wanna call it. Beneficial.
Okay. I wanna make sure that that's clear.
Solar gives you nine hundred and fifty kilowatts. You can give fifty kilowatts back to the grid. But not the other way around.
Okay.
Okay?
And we could make that clear in the text. I did come across a resolution that one of the townships had that talked about. That that had a language in there that stated that it wouldn't prevent you from selling back like an ancillary amount back to the grid. But yeah, but the main point is that we don't want just someone putting just solar panels on a on a vacant piece of land. And as you said, these are expensive systems, so if you have a a property with your house on there, you're probably only gonna wanna do what you need to power your house and the the facility, you know, the infrastructure on your property. With some ancillary, right? So you may have some months when you when you're not using as much. But I would imagine that you're gonna design the panels or the ground to just just enough to do what you need to do for your home.
Heather, would it make sense to expand this a little bit and include windmills? Because we have a lot more wind than we do sun. And I've understood that you can put one windmill up and power twenty houses. So a neighborhood could theoretically put up a windmill and everybody get electricity from it, so.
But then it wouldn't be a primary use, right?
That would, the primary use would be for them, but I mean, including some controls of where windmills can go in the policy. Because they're a little noisy, they can affect bird migration and things like that. So I mean, we don't have anything that addresses those anywhere.
Right.
Don't take away my birds, I'm a burger, I'm a big burger.
You don't want a windmill.
No, I'm a big burger.
Alternative energy policy that would include wind and solar and just put a couple paragraphs in there referencing windmills as well.
And you have to have them high enough to get over the trees that we have here in Concord.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'll tell you what, though, on my street, the wind never stops, it's just. All the time.
Really?
Yeah.
And and they now have noiseless turbines too.
That's right.
They do. They're not huge, but for a house, they're good.
And again, under general provisions, it just being very clear that we would, we not principal use small solar solar energy systems would be prohibited in any district. Again, just reinforcing that we would only allow those as an accessory use. And that solar energy systems shall be properly maintained at all times in compliance with manufacturer specifications in these state or federal regulations. And then I went on to provide a section specific to the ground mounted solar energy systems. And I'm I'm sorry, not ground mounted, roof mounted. That they would be permitted in all zoning districts in compliance with the regulations regarding the height. The way that I've drafted it, they should either be integrated into the roof or flush mounted panel. So in an effort to keep them close to the roof itself. As long as they use the standard low profile mounting hardware, it's not considered a projection. And if it's on a flat roof. So that's, they may project vertically if not, if they're not visible from the street.
Good ad right there.
What's that?
Because of parapet wall, then, yeah, you'd you'd have to lift it up off of the flat, the flushness of the roof. So if you have a flat roof and you have a parapet, say you have a three foot parapet.
Yeah.
You're gonna have, it's gonna have to be up as long as it's flush, yeah, right.
Yeah, most of our buildings have those parapets anyway.
Almost all, yeah.
So, do you see that as a problem then, or no?
Well, no, because you said you're a lot of taking, you're you're a lot of mounting up is what you're saying, as long as it's flush with the height of the top of the of the top of the parapet, basically.
Yep, yeah, okay.
Yeah, cuz that would that would screw somebody.
Yeah. And then if there were any integrated energy solar systems proposed, we would just review those as part of the design review that's required for new commercial buildings. I don't.
Where's that at, I'm sorry, which one is that?
Integrated energy solar.
Got it.
Number three there.
So if some commercial and non-resident, okay.
Yeah, not for residential.
Understood.
Yeah. I added in a section about appearance. That any solar arrays must have a non-reflective coating to to try to minimize the glare. And they show the uniform in appearance and color. I was suggesting that we do not allow the white or gray grid lines on those systems. Unless they're placed on those flat roofs and screened from view.
Now, where did that come from?
It's it's kinda nitpicky for a township maybe, but it's from a design standpoint. And if you go back to maybe that photo that I showed you, aesthetically, I think the roof mounted look better when they kind of blend more in with the 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 roof itself. Yeah, so I don't know, I think the grid lines draw more attention to it. What's that?
The white and gray lines are for what?
I don't really know what they're for per se, maybe John knows.
So, so as the panels have evolved, and the the only issue you might run into with that, Heather, is the the installers or the the companies that service our area might not have the pure black panels. That's a newer technology where it's all black, I mean, they tried to clean it up. So we might be getting in line with, we're prohibiting somebody from being able to install it, not because of anything that they could do differently. They can't pick a panel that's that's, because that manufacturer in this area, these are all territorial driven, okay? So they might not, they might not have the technology to offer yet. I'll look into that for you, though.
Well, yeah, the one house that I I showed you was.
Pure black, yeah.
Yeah, and that was in Concord.
So it was the one, there's one on Route eighty four, right up at King Memorial eighty four, they have a solar, I looked at it the other day and I was driving by. And they have a solar system on theirs too. But they've got the grid lines, but it is.
They do have the grid lines?
It's the technology, the glass changed, the 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 wiring through changed and they they allowed it to be able to do it. So I don't, I I'll look into that, though, like, you know, if how that, you know, if if that's an option everywhere now or not.
What about the solar panels that look like shingles, have you seen those? They actually look like shingle on the roof, so you wouldn't even know it was up there.
Yeah.
I don't know how effective or efficient they are.
Not as, not as good as the smooth pass ones.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
But they look good.
I think those are the in- integrated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's it's your roof or your house.
Yeah, yep.
Now, we're saying here, non-residential usage. If that's integrated into the the shingle for a house. Are we eliminating that for a house?
No, we're just not, we're not gonna require that to go to design review. Because we don't do any design review on residential. So if someone, yeah. Location wise, the only regulation I had was that the roof mounted solar system may oh, I forgot the word not, may not, supposed to say may not extend below the roof line or above the highest point of the roof. Oh, it says no portion. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, it's written correctly. That way, you're not getting panels that are off the roof, below the roof, they're just flush on the roof. Some communities have gone and taken it a step further and said you can only put them on the back of the house, not on the front. I didn't think we wanted to go that that route, cuz that really limits people depending on which way their home is facing. I addressed non-conformities that by adding these roof mounted solar energy systems or integrated solar energy systems on a non-conforming building or structure use would not be considered an expansion of a non-conformity.
Okay, that's good.
And then as far as application, I was proposing that they would need to submit a zoning permit application. That would include a site plan. And it would include horizontal and vertical drawings showing the location, the height of the solar energy system on the building, dimensions and color of the solar energy system. Which again, I know they're gonna provide more than that anyway, because what they submit to the building department includes all the structural stuff as well. So they will likely get the same.
So you required a site plan for a roof mounted?
Well, what they, I mean, I don't mean like an actual site plan, but they show like, you know, the roof and where the panels are gonna go on it. And usually there's a small, just a little inset map of where the property is.
So not a property site plan?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. And then for the accessory ground mounted solar energy systems, what I was suggesting regarding where we would allow these in in would be that these would be only permitted in non-residential districts and only as a as an accessory structure, but not as a primary or principal use of the property. Again, to ensure that we're not just getting a, you know, ten, twenty, thirty, a hundred acres of just solo panels with no other use there. Location wise, I was recommending.
They're non-residential districts. For a ground mounted? Why just non-residential?
Well, like I kind of stated earlier, I, they could, they, in 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 developments where we have smaller lots, I think it would be more appropriate for the roof mounted than than rather having, you know, the solar panels that could be ten, fifteen feet tall. On a quarter acre or a half acre lot.
What about a two and a half acre lot? What about a lot in Mount Royal? Would you rather see?
Yeah, I mean, that's something we could look at, I mean.
Would you rather see a rooftop in Mount Royal have a roof mounted solar panel? Or would you, and they could be in their backyard where you wouldn't see it?
Well. Yeah, right. Well, I, based on my understanding, rooftop mounted is preferable, right, for residential use? Like, that's gonna be their go to. Nine times out of ten, that's what people wanna do, right?
I agree with it, I hear you're saying quarter acre, half acre, I understand what you're saying there, but you have two, two acre, five acre, I have five acre, I'm agricultural, but does it pertain to agricultural too?
Well. I mean, if the solar panel is an accessory to an agricultural use.
Right.
Then it would possibly be exempt, but you don't have an agricultural use that you, like, what, would you put solar panels into power a barn? That you have horses in or something?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Then it would likely be exempt if it's incidental to the agricultural use.
Right.
But.
Well, how about if I put up a ground mounted one just to heat my pool? And it's in the backyard?
Well, I did have an exception in here for exemptions for a single device under this solar energy system number eight. Used to power a single device or a specific piece of equipment such as a lawn ornament, light, weather station, thermometer, clock, pump would be exempt.
Well, pump?
Yeah. So you can see like there's, they use them like for street lights sometimes or things like of that nature, those would be exempt from these regulations. Because they're not even really on the ground, they're, well, or they could be, or they might be on a pole.
If they're on the ground, is there any kind of safety thing we have to be concerned about? I mean, touching children playing or?
Baseball against them.
I had a small solar solar panel on my pole barn. I had a three car pole barn and I used to, I had a little solar panel I mounted in the front, just one line. Ran it in and dropped it down into my car for winter storage to just keep the battery charged. And it faced south, it it put out minimum wattage, probably two minimum, I wish I would have a bigger one. But anyhow, it it worked, it put out electricity all the time. Except cloudy.
And snowy.
Well, it was vertical, it was flat out in front of my barn.
Well, John, we could look at, you know, if if the board wanted to allow, you know, larger lots to have the ground based. We could, obviously, we can change anything here, this is just a discussion point, but if it's appropriate.
About the pool, cuz I guess that's a fair question.
Yeah.
Guys wanna put a whole thing up on his roof, but he could put it, that's a great question. A lot of people have pools in their backyard, next thing you know, you're running your heater off a bit or whatever it might be, your pump, it's a great question.
Oh, yeah, no, I wasn't saying anything about his question, but your question about what about a two acre lot or a five acre lot?
Yeah.
Allowing a ground based.
Sure.
For a residential, I mean, that is something we could look at. We have made distinctions in the past regarding lot sizes and had different regulations. We have made distinctions in the past regarding lot sizes and had different regulations for that, so. If you guys thought it would be appropriate.
Yeah, I could.
Larger lot to allow the ground based, permitted by right, rather than. Not allowing it, you know, we could look at that.
What do you think?
Two acres and greater. I don't know, one acre and greater? I guess you could do it in one acre.
Yeah, we don't have that much of that here to begin with, so yeah. Just try the lease?
Yeah, I have a number of questions, but I was waiting for Heather to finish her summary here, because, yeah, there's a lot.
You want me to just keep going there then, for now, okay, all right. Location wise, ground mounted, ground mounted solar shall only be placed to the side or rear of the principal building on the lot. Setbacks, we would just require those systems to comply with the setbacks requirements that are already applicable to the zoning district for the accessory structures. Height. Ground mounted solar shall not exceed twenty feet measured. From the ground to the top of the system when oriented at maximum tilt. Twenty feet is pretty much the standard in all the. Non-residential districts anyway for maximum height for accessory structures. Lot coverage, we would include these if they're on, you know, as part of the impervious surface area calculations.
Now, the question I had there is at what tilt?
At max tilt, which we did define, yeah. The maximum angle of the solar array, the most vertical position for capturing solar radiation.
For lot coverage, we don't say it's part of the impervious silk surface area. At what tilt? It's different at each different orientation. So that one would be at minimum tilt?
Oh, um. I was thinking more of. How, you know, how mu- how much, the actual physical location on the ground.
What I was looking at was impervious surface area. If it's, if you have it flat. It's got the maximum impervious, because you can't put anything under there. So. That that's what I was looking at. When if it's at minimum tilt, it's going to have the most impervious area, or what's equivalent to an impervious area. Now, what were you looking at?
The way, I think I I was looking at just literally the physical, whatever structures were on the ground, physically, like the actual foundations.
So just the pole?
Yeah.
And the foundation?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would only really come into play, you know. With, we do have maximum lot coverage seventy percent in our commercial district, so. And that's important for stormwater calculations and things like that. But maybe we need to look at that a little bit more closely.
Okay.
Addressing glare, ground mounted solar energy systems shall be installed to prevent negative impact of glare or reflection from neighboring properties or right of ways.
That's a good point, because that's going to change at different times of the year. Might be fine during the summer, but it's like, like coming up the hill over here on Crowdy Road, certain times of the year, you get to the top and it blinds you, you can't see anything. Just where the sun lines up for about two weeks, it's terrible. And the glare might normally look fine, but certain times of the year, it might not be fine, to the location of the sun. So it's good to have that in there, but we consider that.
Visibility, the ground mounted solar energy system shall be located in the side or the rear yard, as stated already, to minimize the visual impacts from the public right of way. Then there were some, an exception provided in here where it could potentially be placed in the front yard. With approval, maybe by this board zoning commission, I was kind of going back and forth, like, should it be a conditional use, or better to have, you know, a site plan reviewed by the zoning commission? So I went with zoning commission at this point, where the applicant would be able to demonstrate. To to this board that the placement of the solar energy in the side or rear would not work because of either, you know, little decrease in efficiency due to topography. Other accessory structures, vegetation, or some kind of interference with an onsite septic or other accessory uses. As stated already, there was a built in exemption. For a small, for a solar energy system that might be used to power a single device or a specific piece of equipment. Again, addressing non-conformities, this would not, not be considered an expansion of a non-conformity. And regarding an application, again, we would want a zoning permit to be submitted with a site, this time an actual site plan showing. Again, with some of the same information, horizontal and vertical elevation, location, height of the solar energy system at maximum tilt. Dimensions, color of the solar energy system, and if they're going to propose it in the front yard. That the, a site planner review application shall be submitted to the zoning commission. For review and approval prior to the zoning inspector issuing the zoning permit. Then the last section would potentially would address abandonment. Requiring. The systems to be removed within sixty days. And then I just had some comments, you know, obviously, once the board, you guys get to a point where you want to move forward with. Where we kind of are on the same page agreement about the approach, then we would have to update some other sections of the resolution to cross-reference the new section, if we go this route or any other modified version of this, but. Section eleven would need to be updated. To list it as something that requires a zoning permit, we would look at updating section thirty-six under the site planner review. To make sure that any new applications that are going to be submitted would show these facilities as part of their application. Or if it's going to be proposed in the front yard. We also want to update the design review section. In case there's a new or expanded non-residential use that might incorporate this small solar. And then also the table of uses for both the residential and the commercial districts, including those as accessory uses in those tables there. And then we would probably want to update the fee schedule. For a permit. So no, it's a lot, and it's just kind of a, I just kind of had to do my best, what I thought would be appropriate for Concord, and I'm definitely open to your guys' comments, suggestions, and theories.
Looks really good.
What you think would be. Good for Concord.
Questions or comments for this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, yeah, it's really good, thank you Heather, covering this is. First impression when I read this at home was it seemed onerous, seemed over. The top, but now hearing Heather explain it, I was like, well, if you don't cover it.
You're going to get to questions later.
You're going to get to questions later. But don't want, I. For me, I'd take a little more time to see if we could. Again, Mike, if you don't agree that I felt it was. A lot of. I don't want to put too much bureaucracy when somebody wants to put a solar panel on the roof, just this is what it feels like, that's what it felt like to me, but I understand the derivation of all the what you wrote. That's just my first impression. The the second was, are we presuming that there is no land at all, or that we want to create for a for-profit? For somebody to put a solar farm? Zone some area? Or or we do that on the IFCO? And we're presuming that, that we don't create a district and saying, principal use is prohibited, forget it.
That's what it says, it's prohibited.
I know.
That's my.
I'm at, I'm reiterating the same question, it's like, are we, are we presuming that, or should we do, or should we? Or have we looked at other areas, the east, the more eastern rural part of the township?
Or are we just saying we don't want it?
Or or we say we don't want it.
That's the question, that's what I'm saying, it says we don't want it.
Yeah. Yeah. Is that something, a for-profit, is that something zoning commission wants to say we don't want?
I for one don't want it, to be honest with you, for.
A solar farm?
Yeah, solar farm.
So, so.
It's one thing, a lot of people put on there for to save energy.
Yeah.
That's a personal kind of thing.
Yeah.
And I can understand, but to put, but to put some big commercial, I've seen too many big commercial ones in my travels. And some places, they're really way out there.
What about Frank, the way out here, the Leroy order there, or something where you'd never see it?
Never see it.
There are some properties out there that could do it.
Yeah, like I said, if you look at that map that she had up there, it's the Greenbelt, I mean, that that, it's it's on the seventy-five corridor, right, and. It's it's farmland that's getting converted over.
Yeah.
Because the next to the eighth generation's not farming anymore, and and they're not everywhere, I mean, if you look at the amount we have in the state of Ohio. I mean, it's not, you were back to two thousand and seven, I think, right, if I'm not mistaken, this is what it looked like to me, up to two thousand and thirteen. You know. Twenty-five? Or whatever, I mean, I think I did an average, a quick average, if I look at. Doing some math, I think I might have averaged twenty-four, twenty-five across.
Yeah.
Years. You mean, are they saying we prohibit it altogether, or?
So. A little aside, my wife and I were traveling California most of March, and. We happened to visit what I think is the largest wind turbine farm in the country, in Palm Desert between the Mount. Essentio. Forget the name of the mountain.
East of San Francisco, or?
South.
This is a big one east.
This is, there are six hundred wind turbines, it used to be four thousand. Where it started in this valley, where there's constant wind, and. The engineer and me said, we're visiting California, but my wife didn't want, join me, I'm the tour, so I took the tour. Of a wind farm.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I've got this great picture standing below it, anyhow, I go up. One on the wind turbine farm, there were two solar farms, each of thirteen acres apiece. Because of all this land on either side of Route ten, SR ten. One, they now want to call it turbine, not a windmill, one turbine built to the standards today. Provides more energy than thirteen acres of solar, solar panels, it's amazing, it's amazing. Yeah. Yeah, now they're, they're, the the blades are a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet in length. And they have like, kind of a curvature to them. Anyhow, I'm getting off topic, but it's. It it's really impressive with, and John probably knows more about the actual solar, I don't know enough, other than. You've got to convert DC to AC, because the solar panels provide a direct current, you got to convert it to AC. But if. If it didn't. When it goes back to the grid, a couple of the friends out there have have it on their roof, and it was very easy to get permitted in California, I mean, because they want it, I mean, it's like. Push it, push it, push it, it was like, other than the building, the structural, they didn't have any other, they just had to apply for a permit and put it up. On the roof, once the roof. And they're producing more than they need. They have the sun. They have the sun, so it goes back to the grid, and actually, the ROI on some of these are like five years. It's amazing. The other thing that that is moving ahead is storage, so. There are battery terminals at this wind, wind turbine farm, so they're building, they have so much. They're generating, they're storing it in batteries now, because they have.
So they have to have an inverter for that?
Yes.
Take the AC from the turbine to the DC.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, it's impressive technology, but. They have enough energy there to serve two hundred and fifty thousand homes, serves all the entire valley, Palm Desert, Palm Springs, it's amazing. Anyway. Why'd I go there? I was just trying, trying, when when Frank brought up, and Rich brought up, hey, do we want to cover wind turbines at the same, I think they're two, they're alternative sources, but they're really. You got to view them differently, real, quite, in terms of zoning, in terms of zoning, what our our job is, our objective. But again, I go back to the question, do we want to say it's prohibited at all, a solar wind farm? I I know it may not be cost effective based on what I heard versus a wind turbine, but. Where there's a will, there's a way, I mean, if you got land that's an old farm, it's not being farmed. I I don't know, I I don't know, I just. That's that's the one question I have.
Come in and. Give us a wind, I mean, a wind, a solar array greater than just under fifty. And go to the BGA. And ask for a variance. If we put in it's prohibitive and.
Well, then I'd go to, that's the route it would take then, if we say prohibited?
Well, yes, if you if you prohibit it as the primary use of the property, and someone wants to do it anyway, they can obviously go to the BGA. Just. Would that be a use variance then, or an area variance, Freddie? Maybe, maybe, I don't want to put you on the spot.
That's a good question.
But it, yeah.
Because they're not permitted in that district.
That.
So, yeah, I think it would be a use variance. Not like the. Yeah, it's not like they're only, you know, only permitted in the backyard.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
They're not allowed as principal uses in non-residential districts, so.
Yeah, they'd have to go to the BGA for variance, use variance, which is the higher, the harder variance to get, the standard. You have to. It's not practical difficulty, it's. Yeah, unnecessary hardship, that there's no other use that you could do in that zoning district that would be viable on the property, essentially. It's supposed to be the hardest variance to get, so if you want to encourage it, I would not go that route, just defaulting back to go to BGA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think, in in my opinion, I don't want it. There as a principal use.
You don't want it anywhere.
No, not in Concord Township. And if somebody wants to build it, we come in and. He hits us with it here, and we look at changing the. Regulations again, but right now, I I'd say no.
Realistic, it's probably not going to happen anyway, given the land that we have.
I I don't think it's going to happen.
It'd be easier to put it in Leroy where there's big open spaces out there.
I agree.
Yeah, I respect that, I still have an issue with prohibiting it altogether, it's just. It doesn't feel, doesn't feel like the mission of this board is to prohibit a business, it just doesn't feel right. We're not. The. Running computer programs to figure out if the property is suitable, but Rich might be right, it may not be, but. We're we're going to tell, we're going to make a statement here, and then prohibits any business to kind of make.
Well, we already prohibited. Vaping and e-cigarettes. Some places, we prohibit things from being this close to this and that, and things of that sort. So in this case, we're prohibiting.
Yeah, no, I. I appreciate that.
It can only go in R four.
Yeah.
Establish a district, where I'm just bringing up the question, is there not a piece of land or a district that is suitable for a solar farm? That is not like. Going to cause harm or grievance to other districts and other neighbors. Without stating it, I don't know.
Yeah, you can't tell by looking at.
Can't tell, but yeah. Right.
Parks are, because there's several.
Right, 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 but I would maybe ask.
Well, right, and and maybe they're, you know.
Consider that.
Yeah, I mean, and if you were, you know, there's also conditional use permit, right, so. Maybe there's a district that would would be appropriate to allow it with the CUP. You know, maybe that's somewhere in the R four, maybe you designate a minimum. And maximum lot size, or land area that that kind of use could cover, I don't, I don't know.
Trees too, you got to clear out all the trees.
And you don't know where the hills are.
Yeah.
You know, so you can't tell. This looks like wide open.
This looks like wide open, but it's actually all Metro Park, the whole quarter.
Well, I mean, there, there is possible land, you know, it was mentioned that the airport, right? So I don't know if it would be likely that anyone would do that there, but you know, if we had a solar farm there, how?
Is that 500 acres?
No.
No, no.
But this section right below it is a big empty field right now. It's giant. And if you drive down Girdle, you look at it, that's just a big, all, no trees there at all. And I don't know, that's gotta be 25, 35 acres.
But they can clear all that, right? So they, they come in with all the plans, the clearing plan, how they're gonna put the roads in, they've done the wetland studies, they, you know. And that, again, that's why some of the information I showed you, if you guys wanted to go down the route where we, okay, yeah, we would want to allow this, we know that it could be large, it could be expansive regarding the, the eight grade requirement. What kind of things should we be asking for to look at? So we can make a better decision as a township, you know?
But under conditional use?
Yeah, or under,
Or under?
Yeah, or any, any, any use. Yeah, I mean, I,
Yeah.
I don't know. You, you know how permitted uses are. If it's permitted, then as long as they meet other criteria, you have to allow it.
Yep.
With a conditional use permit, it does have a, you know, a chance for neighbors who might be impacted by a project to come and hear about the project, voice their concerns. There's a separate, you know, process that, could, could help the township if there was something proposed that might not necessarily be appropriate.
Well, I think that's food for thought, right? For us to maybe consider.
Again, like with the comprehensive plan, we don't have a lot of guidance regarding, you know, the systems, where we would want them, you know, the township's outlook about them. So we're, we're kind of trying to do this with minimal information about what, what do the residents want, what are our trustees want, you know? So we're trying to make the best, the best decision we can. Based on what, what the purpose statements are even to of those districts that we already have in place, if you think about that too.
Yeah.
Okay. Continue.
Uh, the only, actually was just a minor thing and it was, and I think somebody brought it up. Heather, in the application, and you even mentioned it, perhaps under, with the application, you don't really mean a property site plan, you mean a, a location plan or a location sketch?
That'll work.
Of the, yeah, okay.
Aerial plan?
Aerial or something. Say, hey, this is where it's going.
Yeah.
Rather than a full-blown engineer surveyed.
Quite honestly, if somebody's gonna put one on the roof, the company that's doing it's gonna provide that.
It's gonna provide that anyway.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, but I do appreciate all of the various, I was reading some of the definitions, trying to understand, like maximum tilt. I just remember the game. Max tell, this is interesting. Now I have a new definition of maximum tilt. The pinball machine. It was always, yeah. Yeah, we all did.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Elizabeth, those were the questions I had.
We used to raise it up with our, the soles of our shoes.
Oh, you cheated.
You did a lot of work, Heather, it was a nice job.
Yes.
Yeah.
The thought of it is, actually.
Yeah, she put up a lot of food for thought.
Yes. Give us something obvious to talk about.
Yes, for sure.
Good.
Yeah.
And that's what it's all about.
That's what it's all about. Under abandonment, do we want to say anything about removing the batteries?
Says equipment, that's part of the equipment, right? It is, and it's, it actually gets attached to the house. Okay. On, on a rooftop unit, on a residential?
Field.
Are you talking about the field?
No, I'm talking about the batteries in the house, or the garage or wherever they are. Well, there are certain batteries, you know, they have a tendency to, uh,
Panel in the garage.
Yeah, and the batteries along the floor.
Are there? I don't know.
So, the abandonment, you know, solar energy system, so when we're talking about removing the solar energy system, if you refer back to the definition, it's a system and the associated facilities that collect the solar energy, including, yeah. So it's, it's everything. I think that would include the batteries.
Any other questions or comments?
None.
Now, do we want to extend to say wind turbine? Or not yet?
Based on what Rich said, I think we, it's gotta be a separate. It's different, it's totally different, but similar principle.
Similar principle, but zone for zoning.
Put one of those on any size lot, you know, you could put it on a quarter acre, you know.
Doesn't have to be oriented to the south either.
No.
Well, the, yeah, the sophisticated with the, the wind turbine farms actually move.
Well, yeah, they rotate, yeah.
So is that, solar panels don't move?
No.
They don't rotate at all?
Well, they, they can, they can move to the,
Probably the really big ones.
Not the ones on the roofs though. Not the ones.
No, not the ones on the roofs.
Not moving.
Yes, sir.
They better not.
But the ground mounted ones do tilt.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and they can move.
Okay. So you couldn't have one on the roof going, woo, going up like that? You wouldn't want it.
They could.
Ain't gonna do that.
Follow the sun.
Their decisions, that's, that's the only difference.
Yeah, yeah. Put one next to Rich's house, so it gives him the glare. You want a boy glaring? There it is. Blind my neighbor.
I'm glad he saw.
Yeah, right. Same thing.
We don't have, yeah, who's keeping minutes?
You did a great job summarizing.
Yeah.
You did a great job of summarizing. I thought that was actually.
I'm going to take up minutes again, like I did for the last meeting.
That was, that was really good. I did too.
Okay. I checked with Hiram. We did not request the stenographer to be here since we're having a work session, just like we had at the last meeting, although you weren't here. I, I ended up writing up minutes. More of, rather than verbatim transcripts.
Did away with her.
No.
And went to another, you know.
No, 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 she'll still come for, you know, as requested for public hearings.
Didn't we tell you that was your job tonight?
What are you doing?
You're gonna have to ruin shit. You're gonna have to listen to the whole recording.
The amount of concern for you when you were not here was, there was a lot.
We voted.
I'm serious. There's a lot of people here that care about you. Just so you know that, we were concerned. We're all gonna cancel the meeting and just go to your house.
I know she called.
Yeah.
And when, when that phone rang and said Heather, I said, oh, God. And then that's when my wife said, honey, wasn't tonight zoning? It was just a bad day for me.
Oh, yeah.
That day, so I apologize.
No. We were more concerned. We were, I'm telling you.
Thank you, that's, that's heartwarming.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just keep in mind, you're doing the minutes next.
What we discussed was if we had a public hearing, if we have any votes or anything significant coming up, we're gonna ask the stenographer to come. If it's just a work session like this. Okay. I understand. We've got the, the video recording and we have Heather's. Sure, yeah. So we can, we can suffice with those. And the money that we save.
We're gonna have a party.
No, I was gonna say he was afraid. But she shut that down.
It's not my decision anyway.
We're gonna buy Frank an alarm clock.
Our smart watch.
Yeah, our smart watch.
But your abbreviated version was very good.
Yeah.
Very good.
So, any other old business? Are we gonna, you have enough to modify it a second time?
I'm not really sure if I have an idea of what you guys are looking for, no.
She's more homework on this.
Yeah.
But not much, I don't think.
So I guess, you know, Mr. Eifley's talked about, he thought maybe too much on the roof mounted, maybe it's a little too heavy-handed, maybe we don't need permits for that? Is that kind of what I, I don't know what the board's feeling of that is.
That's kind of, I'm glad you said that, because a zoning permit for a roof-mounted solar panel just seems.
I agree with Rich on this. It's an addition to the house though.
Yeah, that's why I'm struggling, but my, I'm thinking not needing it, but then it is an addition to the, it is a visible addition.
Yes, it is.
So like, right, so if you didn't want a permit, would it make, probably wouldn't make sense to have any regulations about it then? Right? Or would it make, you know, if we had, like, I don't know how, what, how the board feels about even what I have in here regarding the appearance type stuff.
You're right. If, a shed though, it has to do with setback property lines, whatnot, right? We're talking about a vertical. Well, it's got size restrictions too, on a shed. Right, but, right, but a solar panel on a roof mounted, right now, I guess, with all due respect to the, to the, to the yard mounted, I guess you would need, because are you gonna do a setback restriction on where that gets located at in the yard?
How many feet? Yeah.
So you do have a side yard, you said it can't be in the front yard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Without cause.
Yes.
Ten feet. So that's a zoning issue.
That's a zoning issue, right, yeah.
Roof, I can see where you're going, I agree with you on that, because it's, it's vertical, but I think, yeah, I think on the, on the, on the ground mounted, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need it.
Could it, could it be a no-fee zoning permit for the roof mounted?
Probably, I mean, or some minimal. Yeah.
Just administrative cost.
Ministry.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if we weren't gonna regulate, if we weren't gonna have any specific regulations for rooftop, then I don't know what we would be looking at. I'm not really sure why we would even want the permit. But if we were gonna keep some of these things in here about being, requiring flush mounted and know what line, grid lines and that kind of thing, then we might want them to submit a permit? Or how would we know if we didn't have a permit that what someone was proposing was gonna be compliant with that then?
Good points.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Good points.
And you want to put a, God forbid, pink or yellow, I mean, I know that they want black to receive the heat, but yes.
Yeah. Good points.
Permit at least, if nothing else, gives us documentation.
Right.
So we can have some kind of a record what's going on.
Yeah.
That's the way I look at it. And like you said, if it's just, just pay the cost of paper, fine. We don't need a big number on it.
No.
Right.
You're gonna be paying enough.
Yeah, right. Now, did, did we say anything in here about roof mounted only on the rear?
No.
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 Okay.
You're right. That's a tough one, not only because where the sun's at.
Right, that's, that's, that's their dictation. Well, I know, but you might object to the house across the street.
Then you might just prohibit it altogether.
On the front of the house.
But if you're not facing south, if you're facing south, you don't want to put it on the back side of your roof.
Well.
You have to face the sun when you're, right?
I know, but wouldn't, wouldn't your neighbor say having those solar panels take the property value down?
Might. They might.
They might say that, but.
Depends on how they look.
Well, I think that, that goes into some of the appearance criteria that I was proposing, posing in here, no glare, no grid lines, to try to make it more aesthetically pleasing if it is maybe on the front of the roof, so the neighbors.
Can be more acceptable anyways, because it's an alternative form of energy.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, that's, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we don't have an architectural review board that would, like Hudson, for example, where homes have to be a certain color and all that. I mean, that's really restrictive, so we don't want to go that route.
Right.
No.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay. We'll try it again next month. No other discussion? Let's go to next meeting, May 6th. Do you believe it?
Be warm maybe. No, I don't. This last month flew by.
Oh, it didn't.
Oh, it did for me. I feel like I'm just here.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I second. I second. All approved?
Aye.
We're done.
Enjoyed spending so much time today, Heather.